Good evening. We're calling to order the Town of Corder Madera Planning Commission for Tuesday, April 23, 2019. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Wolf, the role.
Commissioner Metcalfe.
Here.
Commissioner Bundy.
Here.
Commissioner Chase.
Here.
Commissioner Lee. And Commissioner Bendel. And we'll note, thank you, we'll note that Commissioner Lee is absent for the record.
Well, he's recused.
He is. Yeah, recused. That's correct. Recused.
But we say absentee.
Because he lives within 500 feet of the subject property that we're hearing tonight.
Thank you. So at this point in the agenda, we always open the meeting for public comment for something that is not on tonight's agenda, but I don't think we're going to have anyone tonight. So we'll close that and then sail right through to our new hearing. So this is called the Corder Madera Town Center Monument Sign, Assigned Permit and Precise Plan Amendment Application for an Illuminated Highway Monument Sign at the Southeast Corner of the Town Center. Mr. Boyle.
Good evening, Commissioners. We're doing this fairly low-tech, since we have our, everyone has their plans in front of them, and fairly short application. And again, I'll repeat, this is a signed permit and a precise plan amendment application for modification to the exterior of the Town Center. And this, you may be familiar, some of you are familiar with the process that went through several years ago. The Town Center made extensive renovations to their exterior, including changing the roof lines, awnings, common area furniture, pavings, and monument signs. And currently, there is a monument sign at the southern end of the center as well as the northern end. And this particular sign that they are proposing is identical to the sign that is on the right-hand side of the southern entrance of the Town Center. As you go in, on the right-hand side is this wall with the sign, and on the left-hand side is the wall but with no lettering whatsoever. So there, that's the way it looks, you know, at the southern entrance. However, this particular sign, as proposed and as shown on the plans, will just be that right side, the one wall with the lettering as shown on page one of the staff report. So it's identical to the existing one there. The sign will, as you can see, will consist of two lines of text, one saying "Corder Madera," the other one saying "Town Center," as described in page two of the staff report. The letters will project a half inch out from the face of the sign box. The Town Center words themselves will consist of dimensional letters that will be mounted on top of the curved sign shelf and cabinets and backlit with external lighting, again, identical to the one that's out there today. The total area of the sign, at nine feet wide by about two and a half feet tall, will be 22 and a half feet in square footage. And town code allows up to 40 square feet of area, so way below the maximum allowed. Again, this project has been, of course, reviewed by the Town Center management themselves and brought forward to you. Staff has reviewed it in terms of its compliance with our municipal code, our sign ordinance, as well as specific findings that I list regarding monument signs. Those three findings there, and then in additional, the eight design review findings are required for all sign permits. And so those are discussed in greater detail in the resolution, and I'll go over those briefly. Before I do that, just pointing you to the plan set, which identifies the location of the proposed sign, the grassy area right at the southern entrance off of Highway 101 that takes you off of Highway 1 to Tamalpais Avenue. The landscaping will be identical to the landscaping that's currently existing in the other sign. There'll be minimal grading required, basically just to flatten out the pad to install that. And no significant loss of vegetation will take place. The signs will be, again, illuminated as described, internally illuminated with push-through letters. There will be dimmers and timers installed, so at any time that, if the sign is shown to be too bright, we can require it to be turned down. Last page is a picture of the materials proposed, and then there are material samples that the applicant has provided for your review. And like I said, in the attached resolution, I've outlined all of the findings required for a freestanding sign, as well as all the other findings required for design review. And staff is able to make those findings and would also, at this point, would recommend approval of this application as it stands. And that concludes my report. Applicant, of course, is here for...
Thank you.
Comments or questions?
There's a lot of eyes to the test across. Good afternoon.
Hi, Phil.
Evening. How are you?
I'm great.
Would you like to make a presentation for us?
I think Phil gave a good overview, but I can quickly...
Step up to the mic, please.
Great. Thank you, Phil. Hello, my name is Carlo Kazaki from San Francisco, California. I'm the designer and architect for the project. I think Phil did a great job of giving an overview for the sign. It is the last piece of an overall comprehensive vision the property owner has had in the changes and renovations that they've gone under for the last five years. As Phil said, this sign is identical to the lettered portion of the south entry paired signs. It's the same dimension in terms of height and linear length. It's subtly different in the sense that it's a tad bit longer. It's, the arc of it is slightly flattened because of the radius of the site that it's sitting on versus at the entry of the mall. But the materials remain identical, and the thought is that they wanted to have a consistent signage to match what else has been established on the site, so that there is a consistency in the branding for the overall signage for the property. But I'm happy to answer any questions you have regarding any aspect of the sign. I think many of you are familiar with the site, and the sign that this is replicating has been in place now for a number of years, and it's designed to basically replicate and what's already in place.
Thank you, Carl. Does anybody have any questions for Carl?
No.
I don't.
All right, then. I don't either, really. So I think it's straightforward. But how many years has it really been? The staff report said 19 or 20,015? Is it really been?
Well, I'm trying to think. The design process for the center started in earnest in 2012, and I think that the first application that was submitted, the first phase of that was actually the office building, the renovation of the interior, and I believe that was in '14. Or it might have been a little earlier. I think, I take that back. I think that the application for the elephant fountain, the tower, and the restroom, which was the first phase, the common area for the mall, was then. So I think the office was in '12. The first phase of the retail was in '14, and the South Plaza was in, I believe, in '16. So it's been a long process.
Right. The elephant's happy. Thank you. All right.
Except you remember what Sue said when they brought it up on the earth? The ball is here.
That came out of that conversation.
She put it up and said, "I always knew Republicans would take over the world."
Okay, we didn't record that, so that's all right.
You don't mind? Okay.
Thank you. I think we're good to go and take it up here. So Carl, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Any points of discussion from anyone up here? Bob?
Yeah, no, I think it looks great. And from the standpoint of lighting, since it's really an entrance to Corder Madera, you know, I could see, you know, low lighting on all night. You know, this is just representing an entrance. If that's something you would want to do, and nobody would object to that. The other thing that, as I think about it, and how nice, you know, these sort of monument-type signs look for the, at the entrance, both at the village and at the Town Center, again, I like to go back to, can we, is there a way that we can limit or discourage some of these freestanding signs that are 15 feet tall that are allowed for some of the businesses? And I'd like to think about that at some point. But from the standpoint of this project, it looks great.
Yeah, Phyllis.
I disagree with you, Bob, on the idea of having it sign lit all night. It sets a precedent that will rule in the future.
Right. Okay. The current conditions are that it goes off at 11:00 p.m., and that's what's in the proposed resolution.
So, yeah, I'm okay with that, but I think the sign that we have on the east side of 101, you know, in the island there, is lit all night. Now, this is just a Corder Madera sign.
Right.
And so I see this as, you know, as a standalone special exemption-type thing, which, for a long time, the Beautification Committee and the Corder Madera Community Foundation were interested in using that site for a Corder Madera sign. Now, you know, that never came to fruition, and the Town Center has come up with a great sign that has the name Corder Madera on it. So I would see this as a exemption to not having lights on 24 hours, that we have it on the sign on the other side. But, you know, this is not something I want to battle over.
And then you'll get the village complaint that you're giving special things to Town Center. Sometimes it's best to just leave things alone.
Margaret, do you have any thoughts about this sign?
I think that the sign, the design of it, is very beautiful. I particularly like the idea that it doesn't advertise any particular store or restaurant or anything else going on, that it just announces the Town Center. I think it's done very tastefully, and I would approve completely of it. I don't think that, I'm not sure about what Bob said, that it represents Corder Madera, because I don't think any one particular commercial property should be the representative of Corder Madera all day and all night. Some people might forget that we have an old-fashioned town square up there and a park and everything else. But I think for this purpose, it's beautiful. I have absolutely no questions or objections. I think it's terrific.
Okay. Bob, your idea of an all-nighter is...
Shot down.
So, and I would agree in that I would like to see all the signs off at 11:00 p.m. without fail. That's not always the case, but we'll see what we can do. And maybe the wisteria would grow all the way back to the Chevron Station by magic. You know, it could use it. Okay, so with that said, is there anybody with a motion to make here?
I would do that. In the matter of the sign permit and precise plan amendment, application number PL-2019-0025 for an illuminated monument sign at the southeast corner of the Town Center, APN 024-163-08. This is resolution number 19-016. Move to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Bundy?
Aye.
Commissioner Bendel?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Metcalfe?
Aye.
Chairman Chase?
Aye.
So are there appeal rights with this thing?
Yes, there are. Following action by the Planning Commission at a public hearing or meeting, any decision may be appealed to the Town Council within 10 calendar days of this approval. Appeal forms are available in the planning department, and there's a $300 filing fee.
And I'll just note for, since Commissioner Bundy brought it up, it may be worth noting that we had a very appropriate April Fools joke where our friend, Monty Stevens, actually submitted a pylon sign advertising all sorts of stores off the highway at the Town Center, which we, Phil and I sort of, he had us going there for a little while, I'll put it that way.
He exacted some measure of revenge.
Yes.
That's crazy, on I-80.
Right. So it doesn't say "Town of Corder Madera," but it says "Town Center," so that's great. Can't wait to have that out there. So thank you very much. All right.
Love.
Okay, so now we have the reports section of this, and I don't think anybody attended the council this week unless some staff members attended the council and could comment on that. All right.
I do know that one of the major, or the main discussion items that night was the Greenway Bike Closure Project, as presented by the Department of Public Works, and the proposed bike lane and opening of Nellan Avenue at Pfeiffer to southbound traffic, and then including the bike lanes. So it was a proposal that needs significant funding to actually happen, but it was presented as a proposed project. If the funds come in, then that could proceed, so.
You know, Nellan at Pfeiffer was always open until about 10 years ago.
I was going to say that I was responsible for that meeting and had something else to do that evening, so I thought, well, I'll just review the archives and that I can report on it, and it wasn't posted as of the other day. So next, in two weeks...
Yeah, we can do it at the next, at the next...
Yeah, it was probably a short meeting, but in any case, Mr. Wolf, do you care to tell us about the planning conference or anything else?
Sure. Yeah, no, I would. I would like to, since I got a couple of requests from Commissioners to sort of, as I noted at the last Planning Commission meeting, I was going to be attending the National American Planning Association Conference that was held in San Francisco, Luckey S., this last week. Both Phil and myself attended. I'll give some time to Phil if he wants to touch on a few things, but, you know, I, it was, it was interesting. There were a lot of, it was very well-attended, a lot of planners from all around the country seeing them come, and you just sort of realize the different landscape of the entire country and the different issues that people are dealing with throughout the nation. And it's amazing, I mean, really, when it comes down to it. A lot of commonalities, though, and I think the main ones that were the takeaway for me was two themes. Tremendous amount of sessions and workshops and, you know, things on resiliency and sea level rise and climate change and planning for those inevitabilities in a way, and at least how to go about that. And so to me, that was, those were, I attended at several of those workshops, and actually some of my former colleagues back in New York are now out here, so I connected with some of them. They were visiting, but they've been continuing to do work on resiliency activities. And then equity was the other one that sort of rose, as you might imagine, being held in the San Francisco Bay Area. That was a very hot topic for local planners and to communicate to others around the nation how cities and others are dealing with sort of the issues of housing and land use and equity as prices rise and as economic success is felt here, how you make sure that all communities are feeling that success and are sort of being uplifted along with the rest of the areas. So, and that's typical for planning. You have this broad range, but you have a huge component of sort of, I would say, social issues that are, need to be addressed through planning processes and land use decision-making. And then you have physical needs and physical planning that needs to be done at the same time. So, and then it's just, you know, so, you know, I connected with a bunch of people that I think, friends and colleagues from, who've either moved out here. We connected with, Phil and I, connected with Doug, so that was great. Doug was there from, he was attending as well. We had lunch and heard what he was up to, working on ADU policy for Sonoma County, so sort of taking the lead in that and some other housing issues. But I, you know, I think one of the most interesting sessions, I guess you could say, that I attended was specifically around, it had a city council member, the planning director, and another, I think, engineer, and another planner, all from the city of Norfolk, Virginia, who really, if you know, sort of the most impacted areas for sea level rise, Chesapeake Bay is really one of the, sort of the most impacted already currently at high tides. You see some of the communities out there, and Norfolk is right at the mouth of the Chesapeake Bay.
Naval bases there, too.
And the naval, they have the naval base, they have an old historic downtown, and, you know, they've really started looking at a zoning ordinance, and it was about how you actually create a zoning ordinance with resiliency at its core, you know, and touching every aspect of all their land use policies. And I thought it was really interesting. They actually decided at the, at the beginning of the process of updating their zoning ordinance that they wanted to be the most resilient zoning code in the nation, and they projected out to 2100 using the best available information and basically tried to plan for that. So they have, they talked about, it was really good to have one of the city council members sort of speak, because there's clearly some political challenges with doing that process, but seemed to be successful. They talked about a lot of how to approach the conversation even, and not talk about the causes of climate change, but really just talk about the results or what's going to happen, and we have to plan for it, not get into a debate about that. And, you know, I think one of the more interesting things that they did was they mapped and sort of used a map as the basis for their planning exercises. They mapped both sea level rise and the most vulnerable areas of Norfolk, Virginia, which, as you might imagine, are the, so the closest, the coastal areas, but the whole place is pretty low. And then they mapped assets as well, and of course, the naval base being one significant asset and economic engine of the whole city, and the historic downtown as well. And so they essentially, really based on the mapping, decided to protect through hardened infrastructure those areas that were worth saving. And then they had some areas that were actually higher in elevation and purely based on that fact decided, we're going to direct all growth, new growth, in those areas, and frankly, the other areas are, we're not going to invest in continuing to maintain, they're going to maintain the infrastructure but not invest new development in those areas, and really limit development in areas that were sort of more vulnerable and not one of those must-save sort of areas of town. So there was a question from one of the commenter, one of the people in the audience that said, well, what do you, what did you tell the residents who were in those areas where you decided not to continue to invest, like going forward, really, in growth and whatnot? Not great answers, but they, you know, they, I think they said that it was, you know, that was, the educational component was important, that people had to realize that it was inevitability, and we had to, don't have unlimited funding and resources to protect everybody or to continue to do this. But at the same time, there were some things that they said they tried to do to make people start to think about how to essentially cash out of their existing properties. So they basically allowed people, and if you imagine the coastal areas, they allowed people, that's where they had the most lenient, short-term rental rules, were on these coastal properties, making, turning them into transient vacation homes. They were on the beach, and most of the times of the year, it wasn't a problem. People could use those areas for renting them out. That was one idea that they had and they implemented. But starting to think about how to cash out of those areas and let people sort of take out as much value as possible out of the property over, over time. And in any case, they also, if you, and I'm going to look at this in more detail, but they created sort of pattern books about how to, how to educate people, how to build in a way that elevates properties. They have actually a three-foot freeboard over the FEMA level. Corder Madera has one, one foot. So they require all homes to be three feet if you're in the flood, flood area, three feet above that. So they created sort of design pattern books to sort of match the existing character so that when you elevate, you're not creating sort of something totally out of character. Form standards, and then they actually had performance standards as well for specific uses that required that they have sort of certain backup generators or certain, their own power sources essentially for a lot of uses that were seen to be critical for, it's more, I think, in light of, they were looking at more severe storms and hurricanes and things like that, but many more uses than just hospitals and so on, but more like convenience stores, had to have backup generators as part of their requirement to build and things like that built into the zoning code. So I thought that was really interesting. I met the planning director afterwards, and, you know, he's a resource going forward as we look at our climate adaptation plan and thinking about how we turn some of those goals into actually our zoning ordinance. I think that will be, it's a good, seems like a good place to look to as sort of what they've already done.
Do they have written handouts that they gave?
No, but everything these days, you know, you go onto their website and...
Because I was thinking, they may have ordinances we could adapt for us.
Yeah, but I...
It's a lot of work.
I think importantly, they focused on the planning process. So we'll, I think it's important that through the climate adaptation planning process with Public Works and the consultants that have been hired to help us with that, that we talk about these things and, you know, we need to adapt, we need to listen to our community about what's important, but ultimately come to some decisions after that process has sort of run its course. But there, you know, depending on where that ends up, there may be some good examples out there. And then the other thing I'll just mention also was focused on resiliency was that I did have an opportunity on Tuesday morning, really early in the morning. I did a tour of SFO in the airport, and they had a, and to learn about their flood shoreline protection program is what they're calling it, and how they are going about sort of the process of figuring out how to harden that piece of, you know, obviously critical infrastructure. infrastructure. And so that was, that was interesting. It was great to be out there and see the different pieces of shoreline. Some of it is very much like what we have out here in Cordero. But they are currently going through an evaluation process of engineering, different engineering solutions based on the different types of shoreline and different types of ability to meet, they had about a series of like eight criteria, and they just went through a whole matrix of like decision-making matrix of which, how each type of infrastructure would meet these different criteria, based on everything from environmental protection to cost, you know, and so on and so forth. And ultimately, they came up with for each segment of the shoreline, different types of protection measures. And then they're also, because it's such a critical piece of infrastructure, while they're working with their other jurisdictions that are neighboring them, are also looking at a closed loop as well. So they actually go on to the east side, no, sorry, the west side of 101, where there's that, there's sort of marshland in between where the BART and the Caltrans is. And that's actually their property as well and actually is a functioning wetland to a certain degree. And talking about though, how do, they're going to have to figure out how to create a barrier on that side as well. So, but they're currently in environmental review, so it'll be interesting. They have to go out with the EIR and it's going to cost them upwards of, I think the budget right now, which we know is going to go up, but it's about $700 million.
Oh, wow.
Yep, and so it's, and then it was very cool because at the end of the tour, we got to go out actually to the runways and be very close to where the planes, almost too close. I was surprised they let us that close, but, and watch the, some of these big jetliners say, you know, come in and land. But, but also a good sort of very more local example and people who are actually going through these sort of decisions and considering issues and how to deal with it. So anyways, those are a couple of little tidbits I will share with you on, on that. And Phil, I don't know if you want to, you want to add a couple of things?
Yeah, sure. Just a few things. One, one discussion I had with, with a planner was the different, probably similar to what they're doing at the airport, the different ways to treat the shoreline. And I think in the past, you know, we've put up big walls and big seawalls, and now another technique is instead of a straight vertical levee, is more of a, of a horizontal levee. So you've got the vertical portion, but then you, so really kind of audit, it ends up when filling the bay, which is kind of, for me, kind of funny to think of. We know how big the bay used to be and how much it's been filled for development. And so this kind of, you know, wetland restoration and sea level rise protection results in additional habitat, but it also may result in additional filling of the bay. So it's kind of an interesting dilemma. I had a gentleman from the military who's, you know, very, obviously the military is very concerned.
Army Corps, Army Corps of Engineers?
No, he was from, he was from the Navy.
Oh.
Yeah, he was, he was from the Navy. I didn't get his exact position, but, and then completely the other side of coin, I went to a very interesting session on the future of retail. And one thing someone mentioned that I think they said Walmart had a patent or was developing a patent for an automated exterior pantry. So it'd be a, it'd be a pantry, probably refrigerator in your house, and it would have an exterior door and it would have an interior door. And the drone, so you just order your whatever from Costco and the drone would come to the side of your house, open up your automatic pantry, put in all your frozen pizzas and everything you bought from Costco and close it up, send you the bill online, and you go home through the regular, you know, through your kitchen, open up your pantry and everything's there. So that's one potential future of retail. And they're talking about terrestrial drones, those little robots that run around the sidewalk and of course aerial drones. So interesting discussion of the, you know, the future of retail. You know, downtown is, in this person's opinion, downtown is being much more entertainment centers, you know, places to eat and be entertained, but not, maybe not shop quite as much as we used to.
This is revitalization of the old downtown and older communities, huh?
Yeah, and, and, you know, a vision, you know, a vision that, that, you know, number of people have of how land use will be used for retail. So much will be automated that, you know, you won't, you'll go to downtown for, for many different reasons than we go today. Gentrification was also, you know, again, along the lines of equity, diversity, trying to increase diversity in the planning profession, a largely white male profession, but, but I'm sure it's all relative compared to other professions. It's, it's much more diverse than when I started out, that's for sure, when I, when I go to these conferences, so that's, that's encouraging. I was about, went to, went to a session where it was mainly headed by a consulting firm that rewrites zoning ordinances. So they'll take your zoning ordinance and they'll do an audit for you and tell you, you know, what's, what's wrong with it. And then for a small fee, they'll, they'll work with you and write you a better one. And so that's kind of interesting. They gave us an example of various zoning pages from ordinances and, you know, pick out what's wrong with them, lots of, lots of things to critique.
See, that's what I told you about looking into.
So what was, in this future of retail, did it come up as to, you know, what should be anticipated for a program for a town or a property that isn't a part of current typical zoning? And, you know, if we're trying to think local, then, you know, we've got people here saying that they have to fight for their retail viability out there.
Right.
So, you know, what is it that they think needs to change about, is it uses? Is it, what is it that creates vitality in their minds for retail establishments such as malls or downtowns? Did they say anything where to go with this?
They, they didn't. I mean, they, again, really broadly, you're thinking, you know, nationwide, I think they, people were making comments of the availability of these big shopping malls and what could they become, what could they, they be turned into, you know, these, these large shopping malls that are, that are dying in different parts, in different parts of the country. And some being turned into, to housing and offices, mixed use. And so that was, again, it's so specific to what region of the country you're dealing with, you know, and I think we're probably pretty, pretty unique here in Marin and in But that was, so it's really more of just highlighting some of the possible trends and, and be aware and that, that internet sales are just, you know, increasing, continuing to, to increase and how to deal with that trend.
Having spent some time in Norfolk and Portsmouth, you know, it's a, it's economically depressed in areas of Norfolk, and Portsmouth and so forth has an interesting vital historic area, and so you're in residence is one block from the water for parts of Portsmouth. And then suddenly you're up against the Navy Base or something like that. So it's a mishmash of stuff out there and it's, it needs help just to survive economically.
But the Navy Base is mostly employment and stuff in that area.
Yeah, the Navy is like trying to reduce their footprint and their overhead, so. That's very interesting stuff, and I'm sure it was pretty stimulating. There was an article in the Chronicle about ADUs. Did you guys pick up on that? It was a huge article, and it had a lot of very interesting graphs in it that described what they're doing to move them forward, what are the problems in San Francisco particularly with getting them approved. San Francisco is just bureaucracy heavy, but that, you know, they're trying to find unique ways of getting approval for these, giving approval for these things.
Yeah, and you'll see actually in the next, just the next Planning Commission meeting, you know, we're going to be actually discussing revisions to our accessory dwelling unit ordinance. So it's not going to be, you know, I think what's worked in the past is have a discussion where we've sort of have, in the way that we handled with the hotel ordinance, we have a framework for how to, you know, and a discussion of the policy issues that we should want addressed and some comment and direction on. But that will be, Martha will be here to provide some staff report and presentation on that.
And on that note, I have an agenda item.
Uh-huh.
That has to do with that, so maybe it could be confined to that.
Okay.
So I loaded up with the questions that need to be answered.
Thank you.
And I have one for everybody. Okay, thank you.
Proactive Margaret.
Well, that's what I was told to do, so I did it.
Oh, sorry.
So I think the process, yeah, and I'll, you know, this will be something that I will take with me and then I can get back to you and we can definitely see if what we're going to talk about these, if it's regarding ADUs, timing is perfect because I think we should, we, these are definitely questions that.
Questions that need to be.
Yes. So it's good timing for that.
Peter?
Yeah. Yes.
For the ADUs, I like the way we handled the hotels, which you brought us with the certain things we would get as a town to allow larger footage, square footage. Can that be done with ADUs? I, see, we were at 750, I think, and then we made it 12, which the state said is the max, and I'm wondering if we could lower the basic max.
We'll discuss it. We'll discuss whatever.
No, I just want to know if that's possible. You don't have to give me.
Oh, yeah, no, I think from a process standpoint, that's what I was trying to mention. Yeah, we're, we're going to bring it with an open conversation about some of, I think, not to get into too much detail, but I think what you'll see is there'll be sort of things that are policy decisions that need to be made. There are things that are sort of just clarification and cleanup that our current ordinances have raised some confusion, and then there's things that are needed to be updated because state law keeps changing and it may change again this year. But, so there's sort of three buckets of things, but it, that's exactly how we want to bring it. And if, you know, we'll, we'll open it up for comments on, on any range of things, including, oh, you know, look at this, but it's probably, it's all open. So, so any questions and whatnot, this is helpful, that it's a preview in a sense of what is on your mind regarding this. So I don't, you know, we'll, we'll come with a staff report, but it doesn't mean that that's, we're not going to, put it this way, we're not there to have you discuss weighing in on the zoning ordinance amendment at the next, at this meeting. It's about a discussion so that we can go back and then, you know, revise what we have and come back to you with something that you think will work for the commission.
No, I was just interested in the feasibility that you were able to do it for hotel, commercial entity. Can that be done for residential where you could set sizes?
We'll talk about it at the next.
So this mean, so there's a lot here. Margaret has thrown it on the table so that you can think about it.
Yeah.
Right. All right. That's great. The other thing I wanted to mention, I've forgotten about, other than the article in the paper about the New York high-rise problems. So that probably you're thinking, wish I was there. Okay, so anybody else have anything that we should talk about before we go to minutes?
The recent issue of National Geographic had a very interesting, the whole section was on cities and rethinking cities and what was wrong with some of the cities, these were larger cities, but it was quite an interesting whole composition.
They had a special?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll look that up. Okay, we have two sets of meetings notes here to approve. The first one, Margaret would have to recuse herself from item A on that set of meeting notes, but the other one regarding cannabis, she could vote on, so. Does anybody have any adjustments to the meeting notes?
No.
No? Okay. Move to approve, anybody?
Move to approve.
Okay.
This is the first set?
Yes.
Okay.
March 26, 2019.
Okay, and we will, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I was, I was absent, so not voting.
Okay. So we only have two out of five for the 159 Prince Royal items, but.
Should we?
Would be 401.
I would rather just, since we only have two members who are able to vote on 159 Prince Royal, what I'm going to recommend is that we actually just carry it over.
Carry it over to the next one, okay.
Okay, I'll move the April 9th minutes.
Any adjustments or move second?
Second.
Okay, there's a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. With that said, we will adjourn until May 14, 2019.